The council will come to order. Please use your e-vote application to record your presence at this time.
The voting is open. Please submit your e-vote. The voting is open. Your quorum roll call. Yep, she's up there. Yeah, she's up there. I will now call for a voice vote. Alderman Laspada, not present. Alderman Hopkins, not present. Alderman Sawyer, not present. Alderman Mitchell, not present. Alderman Beal, not present. Alderman Zawski Garza, not present. Alderman Burke, not present. Alderman Lopez, not present. Alderman Coleman, not present. Alderman Curtis, not present. Alderman Taylor, not present. Alderman Brookins, not present. Alderman Daniel Laspada is now present. We will record you. Alderman Brookins, not present. Alderman Maldonado, voice vote. Can you say you're here, present?
I'm here.
Alderman Maldonado is present. Alderman Burnett, not present. Alderman Austin, not present. Alderman Spasato, not present. Alderman Knudsen, present. The voting is now closed. Mayor, we now have a quorum.
There are 35 members present. We have a quorum. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Troy Venning of Quinn Chapel AME Church. Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. Bring you greetings from Quinn Chapel. We hold a distinction in being Chicago's first African-American congregation nestled in the Third Ward where Alderman Dowell is doing an awesome job. I'd be remiss if I did not use a moment to lift the name of Michael Scott Sr., who on November 16th in 2009 was killed. And so I find it not robbery that his daughter is here and that he was an important part of my life. And so all that he did for the city and for mine, I don't find the circumstance that I happen to be standing here and his daughter's sitting here and his son was in here too. So we lift his name now. Let's pray. Tragedies are commonplace. All kinds of diseases, people are slipping away. The economy's down. People can't get enough pay. But as for me, all I can say is thank you, Lord, for all you've done for me. Folks without homes, living out in the streets and drug habits, some say they just can't beat muggers and robbers. No place seems to be safe. But you've been my protection every step of the way. And I want to say, thank you, Lord, for all that you've done for me. God, we stopped to say thank you on this morning. Thank you for waking us up and for starting us on our way. Because, God, you woke us up today. I believe in my heart that you believe that we can handle whatever today brings. So, God, have your way today in this meeting. Bless those who would talk about and discuss what happens in this city. I'm asking, God, that you would bless each person under the sound of my voice, that you would bless our mayor, and that you would bless each alderman, that you would bless each ward, each neighborhood, each person represented here. That, God, as you bring us together, as you bring this group together and allow them to have conversation that even in what seems like a fight, that, God, you would allow for wisdom to reign, that you would allow for peace and justice to have place, that we will remember the people who are sleeping in cars right now, that we will remember the 65,000 children who are on the street every night, that we will remember those who need the people in here to be angry about the right stuff, to be angry about why things are the way they are, to stand and to do what is right. So, God, we love you, we honor and adore you, we bless you, we magnify your holy name. We ask that you'll do some things for us, but also remind us that as we enter into and we're in the midst of this season of Thanksgiving, that in all things, we look to you and give you thanks because it is you who are allowing us to move. It's you who've held us up. It's you who've allowed us not to lose our mind. It's you, God, who's kept us in the midst of all of our trials and tribulations. Everybody in this room got something. And, God, we're asking that you would step in the middle of it. Now, God, bless this meeting. And when these folks who meet together today leave this place, leave off of this mountaintop, help them, God, to go down in the valley and do the work that you've called them to do. Help them, God, to be of service to your people. Help them, God, to love on their families. And, God, I'm asking that you grant them rest tonight and send the name above every name. The Creator, we lift in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mr. Clark.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. Our first speaker today is Jimmy Rothschild.
My name is Jimmy Rothschild. I'm with the Jewish Council on Urban Affairs and the Bring Chicago Home campaign. I live in the 47th Ward. I was gonna come here yesterday and give these comments, but when the mayor no longer needed the Rules Committee meeting to kill Bring Chicago Home, that meeting was canceled. On Monday, half of you in this room failed to do your jobs. You failed to simply show up for a quorum on a subject matter hearing on Bring Chicago Home. In doing so, you showed that you do not care about your constituents, your colleagues, the democratic process, or our 65,000 homeless neighbors. A bunch of you were right here, too, steps away. Alderman Rabois, you told me last week downstairs to my face that you would be here. Alderman O'Shea, you told me mere minutes before the meeting that you would come. What happened? Knudsen, Nugent, Harris, Cardenas, Mitz, Tony, you also broke promises to be here. Harrison Harris, Spasato, Scott, Dowell, we know all of you were steps away as well when quorum was called. We saw you. There was no excuse for not coming in and voting yes for quorum. We only needed one of you to make quorum. But one word from the mayor's office, and you stay away. It's pure cowardice, and you should be ashamed of yourselves. I do want to thank the 25 alders who did show up, especially those who aren't yet on board with or have reservations about Bring Chicago Home. They came to learn about this ordinance, to hear from people with lived experience from service providers, to debate, to ask questions, to engage in the democratic process, to do their jobs. Those of you who failed to make the journey from your wards or from the next room could have done that, too. But instead, you denied your colleagues that opportunity, you shut down the democratic process, and you denied us a vote. But we aren't done. We're gonna keep fighting until the December 11th deadline to get this on the ballot. We're gonna keep fighting beyond then to make sure that every Chicagoan has the housing and the services they need to thrive in this city. We can still do that if we come together right now, Madam Mayor. We can work this out. We just need you to agree to meet with us. It won't be easy. We are willing to do this work. Are you?
Thank you, Mr. Rothschild, for your comments. Our next speaker is Linda Austin.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot, and good morning, City Council. My name is Linda Austin, and I'm back. I've been doing community work for the past 26 years. I now live for the last three years in Inglewood. And I was on a conference call yesterday, and I should be at work, but I said, no, I need to be here for City Council to know that I am upset that a saver lot is coming to Inglewood. There is no way that we should have a saver lot in Inglewood. When you think about the anchor of Inglewood, why in the world would we put a saver lot on 63rd and Housset? I've been in this community for 35 years, been in Woodland, been in Inglewood, and I've been doing this for this community. Oh, I have all kind of wards, but when I heard that it's gonna be a saver lot, please, you guys, I know that Whole Foods was there, and Whole Foods or whoever made the decision that they were getting ready to leave because it wasn't affordable and they wasn't making any money, but we do not need a saver lot. I mean, what happened to Jewels? What happened to Mariano's? Come on. When all these houses that's coming. And thank you, Mayor, for having the initiative to Southwest. I'm on those scalps for the last two years, and we get a saver lot? Come on. We do not need a saver lot. We need an upscale grocery store. There's no way you got $300,000 home and the only store we can go to is an Oldies and a saver lot? That's not fair to us. That is not fair. And thank you for listening to me. I'm just so upset about that saver lot. I wanted to come in today. And thank you, Linda Austin, Community Leader, for the 16th ward. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Austin, for your comments. Our next speaker is Johnny McGowan.
Good morning, everybody. How y'all doing? My name is Johnny McGowan, and what I have in my hand are some renderings of a community center that's gonna change the lives of our young men and young women in our community that holds a...
Can you please increase the volume of his microphone, sir? Maybe you need to speak more directly into it. We'll give you the extra time, sir.
Yeah, a community center that holds six basketball courts, 12 volleyball courts, NBA-sized court that seats 2,500, a banquet hall that holds 900, culinary kitchen, track fitness center, bullying program, suicide counselors, conflict resolution, trade program, life skills tutoring program, college application help, I mean, acting classes, photography classes, a barber shop, a media room, girls and boys basketball teams, a girls volleyball team, a cafe, and that's it as far as what I have for the blueprints for the community centers. I just need four acres of land and somebody that cares about our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan, for your comments. Our next speaker is Justin Allenbach.
Good morning. Can you hear me better? Thank you. Hi, my name is Justine Allenbach. I'm joined here today by many of my fellow homeless service providers who are collaboratively fighting to end homelessness in our city. I've been working in homeless services for over four years, and I'm proudly employed at the Center for Housing and Health, a subsidiary organization of the AIDS Foundation Chicago. The Center for Housing and Health is one of the largest organizations in our city fighting to end homelessness, and we've demonstrated that increasing housing resources and implementing innovative programs that meet the comprehensive needs of vulnerable populations will end homelessness. Do not be confused. There is a solution to this crisis. The center belongs to a diligent network of homeless service providers in Chicago called the Chicago Continuum of Care. Our COC could make a meaningful impact with a dedicated revenue stream and house over 12,000 households over 10 years with the funding. However, on Monday, we were not able to even hold our hearing because these alderpeople did not show up. Pat Dowell, Leslie Harrison, Greg Mitchell, Michelle Harris, Anthony Beal, Nicole Lee, George Cardenas, Ed Burke, Derek Curtis, Matthew O'Shea, Howard Brookins Jr., Silvana Tabarez, Monique Scott, Chris Talafaro, Ariel Rabois, Felix Cardona, Carrie Austin, Emma Mitz, Nick Spasato, Samantha Nugent, Anthony Napolitano, Timmy Knudsen, Tom Tooney, Jim Gardner, and my alderman, James Kapelman. Mayor Lightfoot, it's not too late to get a win-win here. Our 65,000 houseless neighbors experiencing homelessness need you to come to the table right now, today, and give Chicagoans a chance to weigh in on this ballot measure. This is our chance to do something, bring our city home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allenbach, for your comments. Our next speaker is Rebecca Z.
Good morning. My name is Rebecca Zellalom, and I work in immigration, dealing with various Asili, refugee and migrant cases. I also work with One North Side, which is a member of Bring Chicago Home. So let me get straight to the point as respectfully as I can, as my parents taught me to respect my elders. Do you remember the golden rule? My parents and teachers taught and enforced a golden rule of universal understanding that many cultures around the world have some variation of: treat others how you'd like to be treated. Various expressions of this rule can be found in the tenets of most religions and creeds throughout the ages. It is even considered an ethic of reciprocity in some religions and cultures, especially in this country. Treat others how you'd like to be treated. I think we started to learn that in kindergarten? Kindergarten. The entirety of the BCH campaign, a simple, no-brainer proposal, has been blocked and difficult to pass. Our proposal will save thousands of lives. It could be me or any of you in this chamber that could be homeless tomorrow. Our parents also taught us to be timely and do your job well or not at all, to show up. Haven't you all in this room taught your own children this very basic and simple teaching? So how do we explain that our public servants, those in governance, half of the older people didn't show up to work? Don't you care about your constituents? The City Council has had the chance to advance Bring Chicago Home on Monday, but it failed because only 25 alderpeople showed up after a two-hour recess. I don't have to list all the names again, but in case you didn't hear it, I might. Pat Dowell, Leslie Harrison, Greg Mitchell, Michelle Harris, Anthony Beal, Nicole Lee, George Cardenas, Ed Burke, Derek Curtis, Matthew O'Shea, Howard Brookins, Silvana Tabarez, Monique Scott, Chris Talafaro, Ariel Rabois, Felix Cardona, Carrie Austin, Emma Mitz, Nick Spasato, Samantha Nugent, Anthony Napolitano, Timmy Knudsen, Tom Tooney, Jim Gardner, and James Kapelman. To be clear, this is not an increase on property taxes. It is a sales tax on properties, a one-time tax. So when the mayor gets on TV and says it'll be spun as an increase on property taxes, you can unspin that. All of you can unspin that. Please commit to telling the truth about this proposal. This is not a legitimate excuse for not supporting Bring Chicago Home. Mayor Lightfoot, please listen to your constituents and work with our coalition to put this on the February ballot. People experiencing homelessness cannot wait. They might die tomorrow. They need action now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Z, for your comments. Our next speaker today is Mr. George Blakemore.
Mr. Blakemore, home and homeless. If anybody needs home or not to be homeless, it's black people. We got money for new Americans, illegal immigrants, and I heard the figure come up, somebody saying 60-something thousand people here in this city that are homeless. I'm talking about our homeless citizens. I didn't... None of them talk about the dirty little secrets, racism, nepotism, fraud, and abuse here in this council. Anybody need a home is a black man and woman, and they're entitled to this. Claude Anderson said the negative effect that illegal immigrants and even legal immigrants have on the black community. Over 1.9 million people, blacks, have left this city. Why did they leave? And Hispanics are coming in, Asians are coming in, whites are coming in. Why did... How did you do this, you black so-called leaders? Don't lay it on me, Lightfoot. Don't lay it on me, Lightfoot. This doodoo been going on here long before Lady Lightfoot was here. You put up daily, slowly cooked you out, eating anger, hell, watch, all of them. Now, the black population is gone. It's gone. Why? That's the big picture, why? And why do you all steal my minutes when I speak? Somebody wants to sow, Mr. Blakemore. Mr. Blakemore is different. He's unique, and all of our black people are unique, and we're all somebody. So these so-called black leaders are responsible for this homeless saga that's going on with black people. I'm not interested in Asian homes. For them, illegal wetbacks that come over, illegal. You got homes and money for them. What about my people? We are not immigrants. We was enslaved in this land, and we're still on the new plantation.
Mr. Blakemore, we ask that you respectfully refrain from any derogatory or discriminatory comments.
Loud and clear. You gonna want to hear another speaker will speak like me. Why not? Beep, beep, beep. He back to all of y'all. Man, you got the wrong one with me. Oh, nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Blakemore, for your comments. Our next speaker...
We should not allow people to slur.
Alderman Cardenas, our rules are very clear. And, Mr. Blakemore, I appreciate your passion and enthusiasm, but that cannot translate into slurs against other races, other ethnicities.
I don't have to like nobody but me.
I understand, sir, but you're gonna...
You and I, like, are headed down off here. I'm supporting you 99,500 percent. Now, that's it. Let's get to the next speaker.
Mr. Blakemore, we will have the conversation. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker today is Isabella Mancini.
All right. Hi there. My name is Isabella Mancini. I'm here today because I am a licensed clinical social worker and have spent nearly the last decade working with people in Chicago experiencing homelessness. I work with people every day who need permanent housing, being placed in short-term, temporary housing situations with inadequate resources, particularly those who are diagnosed with serious mental illness or substance use disorder and those living with HIV. We need long-term dedicated revenue that the Bring Chicago Home Coalition has been calling for, or we will see our most vulnerable Chicagoans enter back into homelessness when ARPA funds dry up. In fact, we've already been seeing this start to happen. I certainly have, and it is absolutely inexcusable. We are entering yet another brutal Chicago winter with nowhere near enough resources to accommodate the level of need our communities are facing. Bring Chicago Home was blocked this Monday from moving forward when we did not reach quorum at our hearing. If any one of these alderpeople had attended, we would have been able to hear both sides. Their allyship with the mayor proved more important to them than the will of their constituents or the 65,000 homeless people in Chicago. If you know their names, Pat Dowell, Leslie Harrison, Greg Mitchell, Michelle Harris, Anthony Beal, Nicole Lee, George Cardenas, Ed Burke, Derek Curtis, Matthew O'Shea, Howard Brookins Jr., Silvana Tabarez, Monique Scott, Chris Taliafaro, Ariel Rabois, Felix Cardona, Carrie Austin, Emma Mitz, Nick Spasato, Samantha Nugent, Anthony Napolitano, Timmy Knudsen, Tom Tooney, Jim Gardner, and James Kapelman. Mayor Lightfoot, there is still time for you to put Bring Chicago Home on the February ballot. We have been ready to work with you since day one. Use your power to take meaningful action on homelessness and pass Bring Chicago Home.
Thank you, Ms. Mancini, for your comments. Our next speaker is Myron Byrd.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me clearly? Usually, I would come here to City Council with a script, my personal script, but I ain't here with no script. I'm finna say this from the heart. I was just back there tearing up because what happened on Monday to me was a farce. I applaud the 25 that came here and stood down on this floor to bring Chicago home. What I'm not gonna applaud is those other 25 that didn't show up. Now, you sit up here and say that you want us to work with you. You want your communities to work with you and help bring in your communities to light, but you couldn't even come here and show up to work for your constituents to let them know that you want to bring Chicago home as well, but you didn't. I'm sitting up here tearing up back there because I gotta cry for 65,000 that is on the streets. I gotta sit up here and tear up because we have homeless people that have passed away. And myself was homeless at one time. Mayor Lightfoot, I don't have no disrespect to you. I respect you as a mayor and as a woman. All I ask, person to person, if we can work together as Bring Chicago Home and the mayor to bring this together, so we can work together, so we can end homelessness together, and let's kill all this bickering and animosity because this ain't Chicago. I've been here all my life, born and raised here. I don't want to see this go down. When I die here in Chicago, I want to die as the man who helped in homelessness in Chicago along with the mayor. And that's what I asked of you, Mayor. And I'm not coming up here to belittle you or smitten you, but I'm coming here as a man asking you if you can meet... if you can meet with us and let's bring Chicago home together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd, for your comments. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Blasius.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot. Good morning, Chicago City Council members. My name is Elizabeth Blasius. I'm the co-founder of Preservation Futures. I'm an architectural historian, and I'm a constituent of the 8th Ward. And for the past 18 months, I've been working with Pastor Kevin Anthony Ford and the St. Paul Church of God in Christ to work to rename and reprogram Chicago's oldest house, the Henry B. Clark House located at 18th and Wabash. It's also known as the Clark House Museum. And we've been working on this because the movement to recognize Chicago's historic architecture didn't start with the Landmarks Commission. It didn't start at City Hall. It didn't start with any law or ordinance. It started in 1941 when Bishop Lewis Henry Ford purchased Chicago's oldest house preventing its demolition. That work, that work happened over a course of four decades. The Bishop Lewis Henry Ford and the St. Paul Church of God in Christ cared for Chicago's oldest house. It ushered it through local landmarking, national landmarking. This is the first act of grassroots historic preservation in Chicago, and the Clark House Museum doesn't recognize this history. So we are here to correct this obfuscation. I am the co-author of the ordinance to rename Chicago's oldest house. And on behalf of Pastor Kevin Anthony Ford, Bishop Ford's grandson, the St. Paul Church of God in Christ, which is my faith family, my church, I really would like to recognize the support of the Department of Cultural Affairs and Special Events, and Alderman Pat Dowell, and also the Colonial Dames in Illinois in support of this effort. So thank you very much for your yes vote on the Clark-Ford ordinance. It brings a whole new history to Chicago's oldest house and this incredibly important historic asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blasius, for your comments. Our final speaker today is Yvette McCaskill.
My name is pronounced Yvette. Thank you. Hi. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot. Good morning, City Council. It's my first time speaking in City Council, so forgive me if I'm a bit nervous. I'm a resident of Chicago in the 4th Ward. I'm here as an organizer with the Bring Chicago Home campaign. I'm also an educator in the city of Chicago and a member of United Working Families. So I just want to share with you, because normally I tend to observe. I've came to the budget hearing. I've been in those actions that you all have been seeing, trying to bring attention to this referendum. And I just want to speak to why it's important to me. As a person that works with youth, I see the effect that homelessness has on our young population. I also know that 1/3 of the 65,000 people that we're talking about, when we talk about people experiencing homelessness, are young people. And we also know that a lot of those young people exist at the intersections of race and queerness, right? It's something I haven't really heard discussed. And that's something that's very important to me because of economic disenfranchisement, the history of housing discrimination in this city. We see that people are disproportionately affected in those ways. And our community is suffering. And the issues have only increased with the devastation of a global pandemic and the increase of cost of living. We see people struggling with life-end-rough decisions of keeping a roof over their head, affording food, affording health care. And our city council members can't even be bothered to show up to a meeting. And their mayor won't even look at them when they're talking and actually listen. And my questions are, why are you doing this job if it's not to care for the people of this city? Who is your priority? And whose side are you on? All we're asking is for you to listen and to take action on something that all of you say is a problem. I listen to you speak, and everybody talks about how homelessness is a problem. But your constituents are presenting solutions to you, and you won't even hear them out. So many people did so much work to make that hearing happen on Monday, and the fact that half of you didn't show up is disgraceful. And I've watched our democracy exist in dysfunction. And it's very infuriating. And it needs to change.
Thank you, Ms. McCaskill, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
This concludes the public comment period. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, resolutions. We have three resolutions today. A memorial resolution for Elise Mallory, a resolution honoring Sigma Gamma Rho, and Alderman Dowell has a third resolution honoring Pastor Chris Harris. First up, we'll have the resolution for Elise Mallory. The chair recognizes Chairman Harris.
Madam President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of the resolution.
There are no objections, so ordered. Ladies and gentlemen, in the box we have Iggy Layden, Silas Leslie, Alexis Martinez, Parker Haynes, Eng Nordstrom, Fabiano Mallory, Miles Brady-Davis, Butch Trusty, Anna Deshaun, Malaya Arnold, and Pamela Lightsey. Are there any members of the body who wish to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes Alderwoman Hadden.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to be associated with this resolution. This weekend, we're gonna have some great opportunities for Chicago residents, leaders, to participate in activities around trans visibility. This resolution honors and lifts up a fantastic human being and advocate who many of you got to meet back in that pre-pandemic time when we spent more time together in person. Elise Mallory's work and advocacy and her impact on our city, even right here in City Hall. I hope some of you will get to listen to some of the comments today and remember maybe interactions that you had with her. Her impact is gonna live on. And we can honor her memory best by continuing to move forward the effort around trans awareness, trans inclusion, and trans rights. I want to thank everyone here for your work. I want to thank you for your love, for your family member, for your friend, and for all of the labor that you put forth to make sure that Chicago and our state and our country will continue to grow and become a space where all of our residents, our trans residents, and everyone else can thrive and survive and feel welcome and included and have a space. So thank you so much. Madam President, thank you for bringing forth the resolution, and I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Alderwoman Hadden. The chair recognizes Alderman Capelman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to recognize Elise. Tomorrow will be the ninth anniversary when my husband and I upgraded our Cook County domestic partnership, our city domestic partnership, and our civil union to full marriage. And I remember when it was announced, I was actually sitting right here when it was announced that the Supreme Court was going to recognize marriage equality among the LGBTQ population. And I cried. It was, I never dreamed this would ever be possible. And then I remember a reporter asking me, "What's left?" And I told her, "At this point in time, we have members of the trans community who can't even go to the bathroom of their choice." And so we still have much work to do. Elise helped us move forward. Clearly, there is much more to do. But it's going to be one step at a time, and members of this body are right there with you all. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Capelman. The chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to be recognizing support of this resolution. And I want to thank all of you that are here with us today and the work that you do throughout the year. This week, we're honoring the Transgender Awareness Week. And as someone who's been in the council for 12 years and was a state representative before that, I remember when human rights forever, for gay and lesbian community, trans community, was, you know, that was not on the books. But there was advocacy that went on. And to Alderman Capelman's point, there's more that we have to do to protect and support the trans community. Elise Mallory was an amazing person, woman, who led in that effort and talked to people about who she was and who her community was and made people understand the personal level, the one-on-one connection, and really helped advance and speak for thousands of Chicagoans who are our neighbors, who work side by side with us. So it's important that we lift up her work and remember what she did. In our community in Andersonville, she is always remembered. But it's more that all of us continue to do the work that she would want us to do to unite and to really lift people up. So I'm glad to be here with you today. Continue the good work. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. The chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise to be associated with this resolution. I thank you for moving it forward and thank the advocates for the work that they've done. Prior to pandemic and prior to the time we find ourselves in, where everyone is divided, even before then, we understood our trans women in Chicago go through a different level of struggle than many. We have many who have gone missing. We have many who have been killed with no solutions to their murders. And I feel the city doesn't do enough. And so in meeting a lot of the folks who've done the work and in meeting Elise, it gave me new purpose as far as work to do. Elise was someone who touched everyone's heart, if you got a chance to meet her, someone who was unapologetic in being a champion and in her fight for trans rights, but someone who I feel was better than myself because she could always maintain a smile throughout all those fights. I don't think anyone that has ever met Elise could forget that smile. There was always a joy, even in revolution, and it's something that teaches our movement how to continue forward. It was an honor to be able to come here to this council with her, Chicago Therapy Collective, to talk to our fellow colleagues. Some of you had met her a number of years ago when we were lobbying city council members to sign on to the Hire Trans Now pledge, which is a pledge to make sure that organizations learn more about what they can do to support our trans folks, to make sure that they have candidates they can hire for positions. And so I'll admit, you know, it was, I thought it'd be more of a challenge to get the number of people on board that we did. And so I want to thank our colleagues in the council, who all signed on gladly, who spoke about being advocates. And so we want to make sure that not only are we building upon that, but that we continue to grow it exponentially. So we're asking our colleagues to sign on to a pledge for Hire Trans Now to find five businesses in each of your wards to also support and be open and learn about how they can create the environment that supports our trans folks, that allow them to be able to apply to jobs and get the recognition they deserve. It shouldn't be just a week. It should be for a lifetime and forever. When we think about folks who end up homeless because they can't find jobs, there's a lot of LGBTQ folks out there because their acceptance is not there where it should be. And so Chicago needs to be a model for the rest of the country, for the rest of the world. And I want to thank Elise for everything she's done along with the other advocates for doing that work. In order to commit a landmark, what we will be doing in Andersonville is looking at the Kettlepa Stretch and naming it the street after Elise so that we can be remembered. That was the same stretch that had the Black Trans Lives Matter mural in the 48th and 48th wards. And so we'll continue, and I ask all our colleagues to join us for the Hire Trans Now pledge. We'll continue doing this work. It doesn't stop. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Rodrigo Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to be associated with this resolution as well. Elise was a brilliant human being, and all of us that had the opportunity to meet her and experience her warmth and her love and her fierceness were captivated by her. I don't want to repeat what my colleagues have already said, but I think that we owe her, we owe it to her memory to continue to fight because she would have loved to see every trans person in Chicago house, every trans person in Chicago fed, every trans person in Chicago thriving. And we are committed to continue fighting so that we can do just that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to speak to this resolution as well. I want to also echo some of the comments of Alderman Vasquez in the raising of awareness for the transgender community. The one challenge that we think about, especially in the black community, is raising awareness. But it's also a double mark when you are a black. Violence that has gone against the transgender community and African-American community has somewhat been done under the radar. And it is incumbent upon us as a body and is incumbent upon us as members of this council to raise awareness to that so that those who have been impacted by this particular level of violence do not become forgotten. This is something that has kind of been under the radar, but on the west side, we have seen violence against the transgender community. And again, it's something I think we all need to be bringing closer to the radar and begin to support these young brothers and sisters as they go through these challenges, not only in our community, but also when they go into other communities in the city and have to deal with the fact that they are black in a space that normally is not reserved for them. So again, I think we all need to work together to help find solutions for our transgender, especially our young African-American brothers and sisters. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez-Rosa.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I too rise to be associated with this resolution as we honor the memory of Elise and we prepare for Transgender Day of Resilience. I'm one of those people that met Elise when she was working out of City Hall, interviewing folks, getting alderpeople to sign on in support of Hire Trans Now. And we meet a lot of people in this work. And in seven and a half years serving as alderman, I've met thousands of people, countless of people. But Elise was one of those people that really stood out. Her heart, her compassion, her love, it was infectious. It was something that really made my day. And I carried that with me for some time after that. And so it was heartbreaking to hear of her missing. It was heartbreaking to hear when she was found dead. And we still have questions about what transpired, what led to her untimely death. Too many of our trans siblings, particularly our black trans siblings, are taken from us too early. And the fact that this continues to happen across this nation, across this globe, and in this city means that we are not doing enough. Elise did her part. Elise did more than her part. She worked tirelessly to advance the interests of herself and her community to make our city a more just place for everyone. And so it's important that we're having this conversation in this chamber right now. Because as a city council, last term, we passed an ordinance making sure that there was equal access to bathrooms. But that was not enough. In the face of right-wing legislation that seeks to criminalize the act of people receiving trans-affirming care, as a council, we passed an ordinance to declare Chicago a bodily autonomy sanctuary city where we will not support investigations into whether or not someone is providing or receiving trans-affirming care. But that is not enough. We must do more. We must hire trans. We must fund trans work. We must make sure that we are doing everything possible to protect our trans siblings, to honor Elise and to make sure that no other trans person goes missing or is murdered with impunity. And let's make something clear. When a trans person takes their life, they have been murdered. They have been murdered by the hate that is put forward by individuals that want us to hate our neighbor. Right now in this country, there are politicians, there are organizations who are scheming... Right now in this country, there are politicians, there are organizations who are scheming together to talk about how they can win elections by making us hate our neighbor, how they can win elections and advance their own political careers and grow their own power by going after some of the most vulnerable people in our community, our trans siblings. As a welcoming city, as a sanctuary city, we have a responsibility to use our legislative power and not just our voices, the way that we're using them here today, to make sure that we are leading in protecting and in supporting our trans siblings. So I hope that this is not the end of this conversation. I hope that the words that we are saying here today help plant seeds of future legislation, of future funding to support our trans siblings and their important work. Elise deserves so much more. It's so hurtful that someone who was so loving was so mistreated by this world. She deserved so much better. And in her memory, in the name of every single trans person who survives in the face of hate, we're going to beat back the right-wing attack on our trans siblings, and we're going to create a just and inclusive world for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for that eloquence, Alderperson Ramirez Rosa. I didn't know Elise Mallory to the extent that some of my colleagues did. But I do feel that Elise's presence is here with us today and those who have spoken to the matter, those in the box. I think it's incredibly important that allies stand up and speak up every chance we get. And that's why briefly, I just wanted to stand and acknowledge discrimination faced by our trans people, whether it's in being the victims of violence, in access to affordable housing, housing in general, or whether it's being disproportionately involved in experiencing homelessness. I think it's important for all of us to stand up and say that that's not okay and work for a better world that's more inclusive, that pushes back against narratives across our country by leaders of political parties that are non-inclusive, that are exclusionary, and that at their root are hate-filled. We need to show more love and inclusion in who we are as a people. And I'm happy to stand in solidarity with my brothers and sisters and remember the memory of Elise Mallory and many others like Elise that led the way and showed us the way. Justice for Elise Mallory, justice for the trans community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman King.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for bringing this resolution. I too stand in support of the resolution. I didn't know Elise, but certainly benefit from her struggles and her work. I will definitely work to continue to uplift the trans community and trans awareness, but more importantly, resources for programs that uplift the trans community as well. When we cease to see those in their deepest struggles, we cease to be human. And so in that vein, I will work to uplift the trans community and continue to educate myself. Again, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderwoman King. The Chair recognizes Alderman Aaron Sichu Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would like to also rise in support of this resolution. And I think that our colleagues already said a lot, and I think that it's time for action now. So it is important that in our budget, we honor the memory of leaders like Elise and to change these dehumanizing and shameful policies that continue to make our trans community invisible and victims of violence on a regular basis. So I hope that the awareness goes into action to have a budget that puts support to the trans community, especially in our black and brown communities where the situation is dire. So I hope that in this council, and as we have a $16.4 billion budget, that we honor the legacy of Elise with actions to protect the trans community, to make sure that funding is there to provide those safety nets for every Chicagoan, especially the most vulnerable. And the last interaction that we had with Elise was about to raise awareness, to hire, to support in our offices, in our institutions, more hiring, more support for a trans community. So again, we rise in support, and I hope that this council honors Elise's legacy with actions and support for the community that she deeply care and loved. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Sichu Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support. And I have to echo some of the comments that Chairman Jason Irvin mentioned, especially in the African-American community, when we don't discuss or we look over some of the challenges, not only in our neighborhood when it comes to safety, but to our transgender community. So I want to commend, Elise sounded like a bad mama jama, and seeing every one of you all here carrying on her legacy and the work that she has done as a millennial is so remarkable. So I want to thank you. And I also have to just shout out, I think you all know a couple of folks that I'm going to mention, Bishop Keith McQueen and First G of the Powerhouse Church, one of the only open and affirming ministries on the South Side, Jamal Jr. of Jeffrey Pub and the unfortunate incident that happened, but still having a safe haven for those in the trans community. And also my friends Shannon Parker and David Munir over at Howard Brown Clinic that are providing the host services for all. We are all God's children. And I just want to thank you and commend and encourage each and every one of you all to continue to carry out Elise's life and legacy by loving all of God's children. God bless you all, and thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Tunny.
Thank you, Mayor. I rise in support of the resolution and to share my thoughts with the family and to know that her life is not in vain, but to also talk about the safe spaces that Lakeview has provided for so many years for the entire city. And interestingly enough, in the trans movement, which has been around for her entire life, Lakeview has always been that safe refuge for people of color. So I just wanted to say, obviously, life lived too short, but there are many of us that are out there supporting the LGBT community, especially the T, and to encourage my colleagues that these spaces need to be all over the city. And we get, actually, we've gotten some criticism over the years that, why are so many people from outside the neighborhood on Halsted? And, you know, it's just, we fight that kind of racism within the gay community itself. And so her life is not in vain, but I just wanted to, obviously, my condolences, but to also alert people that the Center on Halsted, which this council has supported many, many programs for the transgender community, we've got a long way to go. But as some of our colleagues on the South and West Side, these safe spaces and employment opportunities need to be all over the city. And I just wanted to highlight that there is a lot of good work being done, and there still is a lot more work to be done. My condolences to the family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tunny. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'm glad to rise to be associated with this resolution. I was remembering on this, because I remember that conversation in your office, Alderman Vasquez, I remember the pledge, I remember the interview, I remember Elise because she was so charming and kind and cheerful, but she was not one to stand on ceremony or the honorary or pomp and circumstance without action. And so I'm glad for the resolution, but as we've talked about, there's more to do, do the work. The work has to be something specific, right? And so this is, this is the second council meeting in a row where I think we've highlighted discrimination and violence against marginalized groups in the city of Chicago. That, that's too much of a trend. So we have some ruminating, we've got some reflecting to do on, again, how we fund organizations, commissions in our body that are supposed to investigate and condemn that work. But also, Alderman Vasquez, again, you called it out, the Hire Trans Now campaign that is going on now that I know I received an email about, I'm hoping a lot of people received an email about. It takes five minutes to look up chicagotherapycollective.org, click on Hire, learn on the campaign. To take five minutes, we could, you can write an email in five minutes on your phone connecting folks with that campaign to businesses in your ward. Did it yesterday. Already, businesses in my ward have followed up with me on these specific action steps that they are then taking on that pledge. So let's, let's do that. Elise was amazing. She gave so much to this city. What, what are the specific things that we are going to do to, to give back so that this isn't just a piece of paper, that it is moving the 50 of us, the 36 of us in this room to action and acting today? Thank you.
Alderman, the Chair recognizes Alderman Knutson.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in strong support of this resolution as well, in the legacy of Elise, and also to say thank you to the leaders in the box. There's a lot of great leaders in the box that are truly doing this work. So if we're doing anything, it's, we're here to support you. I hope you know you can always reach out as we push this. The trans community is under constant attack. This, this work is truly ongoing, and until we, we yell from our rooftops that trans rights are human rights and get this understood, not only in the city of Chicago, but nationwide, we're not doing enough. I think it goes into our status in Chicago of being a sanctuary city, truly a safe home. That needs to be for everyone. I spent a bulk of my May working in an LGBTQ+ shelter in Tijuana, Mexico, promoting asylum rights, and a lot of the population in the shelter were members of the trans community. Under constant attack, it's a life or death situation. So when I think of Chicago being a safe space and home, it ties to us being a sanctuary city. So I thank you all. We need to keep doing this work and really boost it, and I want to be in strong support.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other members of the body that wish to speak? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. I too also rise in support of this resolution. I didn't know Elise. I knew her reputation through friends in the community, and I want to honor her today by acknowledging all that you all do every day to fight for transgender rights. And want to talk about something that nobody's talked about today, which is, I have children. I have children that are 13 and 15, and it's not a thing to talk about people who are different, or transgender, or lesbian, or gay. Like, and that's amazing that young people are now being taught this, and there's acceptance, because I think that's the best chance.
Are not lost, and that we recognize that when any of us are suffering, when any of us are victimized, we all are victimized. This is a time to remember and honor one of our brightest lights, as this week marks Transgender Awareness Week and Sunday marks Transgender Day of Resilience. Elise Mallory, I think we all know, was taken to us, taken from us far too soon, but she made a profound impact, a positive impact, in her life's work to make our city more inclusive and more loving. She was known for being kind and compassionate, while being a fierce and unrelenting voice and a rallying cry for equality. I had not thought that I met her, but one of the folks in the box showed me a photo from inauguration day, where we stood together and took a photograph. I thank you for sharing that memory with me. Her advocacy knew no bounds, whether she was traveling across the state of Illinois to meet with youth at the Rainbow Cafe LGBTQ Center in Carbondale, or to lobby legislators in Springfield. Elise was passionate about advancing justice for her community. She worked, her work spanned across several organizations, including the AIDS Foundation of Chicago, Equality Illinois, and the Civil Rights Bureau of the Illinois Attorney General's Office. Perhaps her most notable contribution to our city was her work to co-found the Chicago Therapy Collective. Knowing that employment discrimination against transgender community is a rampant issue here and across our country, Elise spearheaded the Hire Trans Now initiative to encourage businesses to create welcoming workplaces and hire transgender residents. In collaboration with our advisory committee, as well as the city and community leaders, it was decided that the mayor's office would participate in a Hire Trans Now initiative, championed by Elise. With the passage of the 2023 fiscal year budget, and I appreciate those who voted in favor, we are investing to enact the Chicago Therapy Collective's proposal so they can assess our current hiring practices and develop a policy promoting trans hiring inclusivity and training for our city departments. It's our hope that you, all the members of the city council, will also participate in this initiative by recruiting five small businesses in your ward to follow your lead and sign the Hire Trans Now pledge. This doesn't become real, folks. It's not just words. It's got to be concrete, measurable actions. We need to open up doors of opportunity for members of our community, all of our communities. And when you talk about inclusion and equity, it's got to include the trans community, pure and simple. With this resolution and Hire Trans Now initiative, we are affirming Chicago as a beacon of freedom and hope, where transgender people can come to find employment and access resources and support. We need to help our brothers and sisters to live the life that they have chosen, their authentic life. And I am confident that is exactly the future that Elise would have wanted to see in this city. We need to make sure that her hard work, her sacrifice, her selflessness does not go in vain. The way that we honor her legacy is by promoting the work and making it a reality. So during this transgender awareness week, and always, my office will continue to work hand in hand with this community to make sure that we continue the fight, to make Chicago the most equitable and inclusive city in the country. Thank you all for everything that you do every day, the sacrifices, the work. I know the work isn't easy. I know sometimes you feel despair, but believe me, your work is making a difference and impact that is not in vain. God bless you all. Thank you.
I move adoption by a rising vote.
We just did.
We already rose, but.
All right, our next resolution. I'm told that we have members of Sigma Gamma Rho in the House. Ladies and gentlemen, we are honoring Sigma Gamma Rho on a special occasion of the sorority's 100th anniversary, which happened this month in November. And I believe I, we have in the, in the box and here on the floor, our great treasurer, Melissa Conyers Irving, a member of the sorority, Rashida S. Liberty, International Grand Basilisk, which means the current national president, Banita Herring, past International Grand Basilisk, Amy Mayby, Chief of Staff, Commander Davina Ward, Commander for the 11th District, Deputy Chief Sonora Benn from the South Side, I know she's here, Coach Tanya Edwards of the Chicago Sky, L'Oreal Marshall from the Regional Syntakis, Nay Colton, undergraduate coordinator, Chanel Dickerson, editor in chief of the Aurora Magazine, and international legal advisor, Deborah Hughes. Are there any members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to suspend the rules to allow our treasurer to be able to get up and, does she want to open or close?
I think she wants to close.
You want to close?
So we'll come back to you, unless you want to open. You want to open? Okay. The chair recognizes, hearing no objection, suspending the rule, so order. The chair recognizes Alderwoman, our treasurer, Conyers Irving.
Good morning. I want to first thank Mayor Leifert and of course, the members of the city council for this opportunity to speak on behalf of such an important resolution, for such an amazing and illustrious organization that personally means so much to me. I want to acknowledge the great leadership of our organization, who during our centennial year has certainly taken this organization to extraordinary heights. All the way from the state of Texas, our International Grand Basilisk, President in layman's terms, Rashida Liberty. I know she waved her hand, but I want her to wave it one more time. Please stand, International Grand Basilisk. And of course, to all of our central region leadership and of course, Commander Ward, Coach Tanya Edwards of Chicago Sky, I do not want to repeat those names, but I do want to say, as treasurer of this great city, many see where I am, but do I, do not know where I come from. Today, we celebrate 100 years of an organization, a sorority, that I joined 26 years ago. I know you're wondering, well, when did I join? Like many Black and Brown students, when I attended college, I was the first generation college student. So I did not necessarily have a roadmap to show me what to do and what not to do. Sigma Gamma Rho was a guiding light for me. Many of you know that Sigma Gamma Rho was founded by seven young Black women between the ages of 18 to 21 years, and at the time, at a predominantly white institution in the state of Indiana. We all know the challenges even today that Black and Brown face. Can you imagine the courage it must have taken for those seven young Black women to not only attend Butler University in Indianapolis, but to create a new sorority? When I look around this room at my beautiful sororors in blue and gold, I can't help but see how this illustrious organization helped to produce such great women leaders. Although we have it in us, we were leaders before we joined this organization, the organization gave us that push, gave us that support, gave us that backing, gave us that training to help us be successful. That's why today, you'll see the treasurer of the third largest municipality. You'll, thank you. You'll see Congresswomen, hip hop artists, doctors, lawyers, educators, CEOs, VPs, authors, commanders, coaches, teachers, administrators, and so many other professions we can't even mention. When I look around this room and see the excitement of my sororors, it feels as if we were there 100 years ago, when it all started. And that's because even today, we feel the struggle, yet we see the hope. We feel the struggle, yet we see the support of each other to know that the best is yet to come for Sigma Gamma Rho. So Mayor, as I take my seat, I must tell you that I can't help but think about you at a time such as this. When I look at how far we as Black women have come, the first Black woman mayor of the third largest city, I cannot underestimate the challenges that you as mayor face each and every day. But you remind us, and I want you to know this, you remind us as Black women that we're not new to this. We're true to this. So thank you, Mayor Leifert. Thank you, members of the city council, especially my D9 sisters and brothers, and of course, that great man from the 28th ward, for allowing me just a few moments to speak, EYIP sororors.
Well, that was a mic drop moment. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I stand in support of this resolution for obvious reasons.
He wants to go home tonight.
Sleep being one of them. But, but the reality is this, Sigma Gamma Rho, on the west side of Chicago, we don't really have a lot of Greek organizations that are operating, doing service on the west side of Chicago, but Sigma Gamma Rho, the members of the Theta Chi Sigma chapter do work on the west side of Chicago, led by the basilisk there, Jamies McGee, who happens to be a classmate of mine when we grew up together, are out doing work on the west side of Chicago. So beyond the fact that our illustrious and beautiful and slim treasurer is, is a member of the organization, but it's the work and, and the service that they have done, not just, you know, on the west side, but across our, our city that is to be commended. I want to thank the International Grand Basilisk for joining us today. We're glad that you would be able to join with us today. And other members of the, of the, of the sorority, also our commander from the great west side, Davina Ward, and some other members of the, of the chapter for the work that you all are doing to help make Chicago a, a better place. I'll, I'll say this in closing, I know my wife is, is a, is a member of the, of the sorority and she does great work and it's in her. And when I met her, the irony is, is kind of funny. She went to Eastern Illinois University and I happened to go to Eastern at, at an occasion, I was dating a young lady that was a member of another sorority at the time, but,
Uh oh.
Nope.
But, but I figured it out. Now mind you, I, 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 this is interesting. I dated a Delta. I, I met a Zeta. I even married, I was actually married to an AKA one time, but I found my true love with Sigma. So I would say that I'm glad to have met such a wonderful lady, such a wonderful woman from such a wonderful organization. And I want you all to continue the work that you all are doing beyond this 100 years. Thank you all and God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. I feel like this is a Real Housewives, Real Sororities or something. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise in very excited support for this resolution. Congratulations on 100 years. A few of my dearest friends are members of your organization, but they don't look like you. They are two Korean-American and one Asian, and one Chinese-American from Ball State University. So I want everybody to know and thank everybody, every single member that's here today, what an impact your organization has had on the lives of some very incredible leaders in my life. And what, what organizations like yours have meant to me personally. I did not know the history of the founding of Sigma Gamma Rho at Ball State, excuse me, not Ball State, Butler University. Indiana is relevant because I was one of seven founding members of an Asian sorority at Indiana University. Well, thanks. But I will tell you that when we, when the seven of us, interestingly, interestingly enough, started to have this conversation, the most supportive people were the sisters from every single African-American sorority on campus. Because there's so much that we had in common in terms of the same struggles and what is it about Indiana and making people of color want to come together? I have no idea. But the, but the open arms and welcomeness that your organization showed us in helping us to chart our own path was incredible. So thank you for being an inclusive organization that has done incredible service. Thank you for giving us our, our, our famous and illustrious city treasurer. She's amazing. And, and thank you for what each and every single one of you is doing and the impact that you make in the world. And here's to another 100 years.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. The chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise, this awesome occasion, Madam Treasurer, you and Alderman Irvin are so funny, I'm telling you. You guys are really funny. I also come from a long family line of Phi Beta Sigma and Sigma Gamma Rho. Actually, unlike you, I should have went in 26 years ago, but I didn't because I was just a bad boy. But at this time, four years ago, I was on the line and I had an accident and I couldn't go over two weeks later. So I'm back on though. I'm back on, I'm back on. So I want to, to encourage you to continue to recruit more young beacons of, of light to continue your success for another 100 years. And so congratulations to you all, to you all. Thank you, Madam President.
The chair recognizes Alderwoman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the city council. I too rise in support of this resolution and since we are having confessions of the council this morning,
Don't tell too much.
I, I, I must confess, I must confess that I made no mistake when I went number one and pledged AKA. However, however, I rise in support of this and to all my sister friends and my sister sororors that do so much and have done so much. What most people don't understand is to be a part of a sorority, no matter what campus you are, bonds you forever in sisterhood. The dedication of service to others is everybody's mantra. And to teach one and to bring one and to help each other thrive and be the best that we can be is the mantra of all sororities. And so to Madam Basilisk, to Madam Treasurer, to Commander Ward, and to my lifelong sister friend Gina Davis, who came out just to come here today, I want to congratulate you and I look forward to, well, I won't be here for the next 100 years, but a, a, a long and eventful continuation of the good work that you have done and will continue to do. Congratulations.
The chair recognizes Alderman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this resolution and want to congratulate you on 100 years well Fraternities and sororities are obviously important to many of us here, but play an integral, an integral part of the lives of African-Americans in colleges all throughout this country. As I look for schools for my now senior 17-year-old and I did for my 24-year-old, I always looked to see if they had active fraternities and sororities. Because what, in trying to tell these Gen Xers or whatever they call, how, how colleges is a game and a system and you do better in the system when you have people there helping you and telling you and showing you the right way. I am happy that 40 years next year, I would have been in my fraternity for 40 years. And to have my brothers tell me, hey, don't take that professor, that's an F. Take that in the spring when that's an easier class. Go talk to your counselors. My parents could not help me with that, despite the fact that my dad went to a junior college. He didn't understand. They don't understand that being on a college with 40-something thousand kids at a time and you can walk campus from one part of the yard to the next and not see another African-American, how much it means to see people like you on that campus doing the right thing. So God bless you. I wish you all another 100, 200 years, although when I started, it was the Elite Eight and then it somehow grew. But with that said, with that said, it is really important that we continue doing what we're doing. God bless you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm proud to be here in my red. As one of the newest members of Delta Sigma Theta, the Chicago Alumni Chapter, and on behalf of our president, Madam and on behalf of our president, Madam President Shaughnessy Curry, I want to congratulate the women of Sigma Gamma Rho on your 100th year anniversary. One of the things, the common thread of the Divine Nine sororities and fraternities is that we all have a consistent, strong commitment to public service, to service to our community, to uplifting our communities. And this is something that we share. The sisterhood, the brotherhood, is really, really important. And so I acknowledge the commitment of Sigma Gamma Rho and all of the work that you women of Sisters of the Sisterhood have done throughout the city of Chicago. Treasurer Irvin, I appreciate you bringing this resolution forward. To my other colleagues who are involved in the D9, congratulations to you as well. I think I wanted to say something else. Yes, I wanted to acknowledge Toni Strange, who is straight, I'm sorry, from the 3rd and 4th Ward, and Sidney Golladay, who was a former principal of Drake Elementary, but is now at CPS doing fine work, I'm sure. These are women who have committed and have given themselves in my own community. So again, congratulations, and I will take my seat.
The chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this. And I want to thank the treasurer for all her hard work and her commitment to a sorority that she truly loves. And to your Supreme Basilisk, I want to say thank you for coming all the way here from Texas to celebrate 100 years. So worth it. And to thank every soror from Sigma Gamma Rho for being here in the City Council today because you could have been doing any other thing that you wanted to do. But we thank you for celebrating today and bringing the celebration to us. Again, I won't be repetitive. Thank you for your service. May God continue to bless you, keep doing, and blessing other people through you because that's what the organization is all about. Service is no more than blessing somebody else on and passing it on to the next person. So again, thank you, thank you, Madam Treasurer, for, again, your help and support. And thank you to Stephanie, Alderman Stephanie Coleman, for taking the lead on this. So I appreciate you, my sister.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. The chair recognizes Alderwoman King.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome, Supreme Basilisk. I am not in a sorority, although I did help a lot of folks pledge. We'll say that. But understanding what all of the sororities, fraternities, and the Divine Nine have done in their sisterhood and brotherhood to uplift, and being here today just to uplift your 100 years because I know you reach back to support other folks and will give us another 100 years. I just want to say congratulations on your 100th year. Continue in your efforts to serve. It's beautiful to see so many sisters here. I did try and, you know, celebrate a little bit. I see some haters in here, too, but that's okay. But congratulations on your 100 years. Just want to shout out my good friends, Spring Capers over there, Sigma Gamma Rho as well. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to also rise and be associated with this resolution. Want to thank you all for coming here today. This is really an honor. Madam Treasurer, wonderful, thank you for bringing forth the lovely women of Sigma Gamma Rho. I was a son of two parents, were part of the Divine Nine. When I got to college, I had intended on pledging, but life got in the way and situations just didn't warrant it. And I did not see the light, Brother Burnett, until later on. And instead, joined another organization that's also involved in service. So I appreciate the service that you all do. It's very, very important to our communities. And I cannot express it enough to say thank you for what you do. I won't start naming names because I know a lot of you all out here, and I'm looking around, seeing everybody that I know. And it's wonderful to see you here resplendent in your blue and gold. And I just tried to wear a little blue today just to show support. But again, I want to thank you for your work. Continue to do that work for all the people in Chicago that deserve that little uplift and help and see someone like yourselves, captains of industry, administrators, all the great things that Treasurer Irvin stated earlier, that they get to, young girls get to see you. And when they see you, they want to become like you. So I want to thank you for doing all that you do in the communities. Want to continue that next 100 years of work. God bless you, and congratulations to everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Alderman Sawyer. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. I definitely stand in support of this resolution. If you all didn't do anything else, the fact that you got on blue and gold, Simeon represented. You did well. So as we get ready for Midnight Madness at Simeon tonight, and we'll continue to present the blue and gold, and as we play for the city championship this week, we'll be presenting the blue and gold. I just want to just say, I definitely support this resolution, not only because of the work that you do, Madam Treasurer, but for all the years and the work that I've seen leaders of and members of Sigma Gamma Rho do. My sister is here today. I didn't even know she was in the audience, and she's not my biological sister, but she probably know more about me than anybody. We grew up together, not only in fellowship, but also the Robert Taylor Home Projects. Toni Straight, I love you so much. Paula, I see you over there. Thank you for your service and what you do in the community. And I was hoping that Commander Sonoa Bean was not here. I don't think she is because I am so mad that she's leaving my district. She's getting a promotion, well deserved. But there was someone that has truly made a difference in the 6th District and in the 17th Ward community. Commander Ward, the work that you do is just stellar. And so I appreciate you all so much. Continue to serve. As you don't realize the work that you do, others are watching and will benefit from it. But our communities as a whole can be better for it. So continue to stay involved, continue to make a difference. And I want to give a shout out to someone that is dear and special to my heart. She couldn't be here today, and that's Dr. Valeria Gates. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, you all know that you are appreciated. And thank you so much for traveling far. We was just down in Dallas when our Cowboys, never mind, anyway. So, but just thank you so much, and I appreciate it. Bye.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Metz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Black and gold. I thank my treasurer, Melissa, who sent out their texts. She said, "I sent out a text to you all, and you all supposed to be wearing this color tomorrow." I'm like, okay, let me go see what I can find. But let me tell you, when I did find this black and gold, I felt some kind of way, you know? I felt strong. When I walked in here and saw this black and gold, I said, "This is what I'm talking about. This is what I'm talking about, blue and gold, blue and gold." That's excitement because that stand for strength, ladies. You all have power that you don't even know you have. You know, I want to see that power being used throughout the city, particularly with our young peoples. Because I saw, and I didn't join a sorority when I was in college, but I saw the different sororities, and I wanted to get into something I was afraid of initiation. I'm just telling you. I didn't know what folks was going to do, and I was away from home, and I started hearing stories. And I'm like, okay, maybe I'll just wait. But because financially, I wasn't able to stay in college because we didn't have the funds, I chose to come to Chicago to get a job and work. But I always respected what all these women stand for. No matter what sorority you're in, I think there is some power in it. I think that you all have that unbelievable power. Your sisters stick together. You got the strength, you know, the wisdom. And there's nothing no better when one fall, there's somebody to catch you. If you need some help, you got somewhere to go. And that's what is missing with our younger generation today. They need that help. So wherever you stand at, and whatever you can do to help, let's try to give that love and show that love. So, Madam Chairman, I want to celebrate these women today for 100 years of the celebration. You all look absolutely beautiful. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Metz. The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I also like to stand in support of this resolution, although I didn't get through all of the sororities like my colleague here. I did, I did, I did marry a Zeta. But I do want to say this, ladies. You all make us so proud. I mean, just to see so many African-American women who've been to college, African-American women who are professional, who are giving back to our community, is very profound. I mean, I'm always excited when I see brothers from the fraternities and sisters from the sororities who's always giving back in every profession, like my Commander Ward over there, principals at some of my schools, every profession, even my pastor is a Sigma. You know, every profession, I see someone from a fraternity or sorority. So I just want to commend you all for being a role model. You all are role models to all of the young people that's coming up behind you. I appreciate the services that you all give in our community. Whenever any of the organizations come to me for support, I support them because it says a lot when you all are out there. It says a lot when you doing service in our community and people see you in your different colors, and it's a positive color, right? It's something positive. It mean that there are professional African-American people giving back to our community, and it is letting the other young people know in our society that you can do the same thing. So I just want to say, thank you all for doing it for 100 years. Thank you for being involved, and God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Coleman, decked out in her AKA, pink and green.
Thank you, Madam President. I undoubtedly stand in support of the beautiful women of Sigma Gamma Rho. As a member of the first, finest, and best sorority, I do oblige, and I want to thank you, our international basilisk, those of us in the Greek, we understand how important and how much of an honor it is to have you in our wonderful city under the leadership of our great mayor and the woman who holds the bank account, our Madam Treasurer, Melissa Irvin. And just knowing some of the great women like Monique, one of my best friends, who's a past regional director. Tiffany Hightower here. Stand up Tiffany, our Illinois Black Caucus Foundation Executive Director. Dr. Carolyn Palmer, my other mama. And one of the women who raised me, Kim. Thank you so much. When you were speaking, Madam Treasurer, I thought about 1922, seven black girls attending a predominantly white college in Indiana, and still the conservativeness of Indiana to this day 100 years later. But the courage, the audacity, the faith, the hard work, the dream that they had so that 100 years later, their legacy will live on throughout each and every one of you today. I was speaking with one of your sororors saying, "How amazing is it that you are witnessing your centennial, and you'll be able to tell your daughters and your granddaughters and your legacy about the feeling of celebrating 100 years of service?" While we wear different colors, one thing about us, we are all sisters. Working, yes, working together of making a difference in our community, making a difference in our city, but making a difference in love to one another. God bless you all, congratulations, and happy centennial SG Rose.
Thank you, Alderwoman Coleman. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Scott.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Secretary, Treasurer, I'm sorry. But I was not in a sorority, but this exemplifies sisterhood and black love. Something that I have, in the last five months, seen that we have all gotten away from is love. And so in order for a world to work, everybody has to work off of love, and this exemplifies love. This exemplifies service, dedication, loyalty. And although I haven't been where you've been through a sorority, but many of my friends are. The only thing, as Alderman Coleman said, that separates the many black women that do so much service is the colors. And so we have so many professional black women that sit before us, and I am proud to stand in your presence today. Because like our treasurer said, we have teachers, we have principals, we have attorneys, we have our international basilisks over there. And thank you, thank you for coming into our city and representing your sorority with us. Thank you for sharing the moment with us. This is a fine black moment in City Council today. So it's not just about, for me, it's not just about this sorority, it's a black moment for me. And so I appreciate this woman, a fine black woman moment. Thank you, guys, and congratulations to your 100 year of celebrating Sigma Gamma Rho. This is fantastic. Oh, and I wanted to give a shout out to my favorite Commander Ward. I love you.
All right, any other members of the body wish to speak to this resolution? All right. Ladies, what an honor. When I look out on you, what I see is a moment to celebrate black excellence. And you've heard all the words that have been spoken previously, and I endorse every single one of them. It makes me proud to see you all. Makes us proud as a community to know that there are smart, educated, strong, black women doing the Lord's work everywhere. It is a great honor to have you here, Madam Basilisk. I know you've come a long way. We are honored to welcome you here in the City Council Chamber and many of your colleagues. As a woman, I can attest to the significance of friendship and sisterhood as in all of our lives. Our circles of love and support truly make all the difference in our everyday lives along our paths to happiness and prosperity. I look out at a beaming City Treasurer who's proud in this moment, but I also think about our City Clerk and the three of us and the work that we do together. Sisterhood matters, and it particularly matters among black women. Perhaps no group of women needs this kind of support than black women as we face distinct barriers in our own paths. So I'm glad that the women of Sigma Gamma Rho have come to the great city of Chicago to uplift one another through sisterhood, leadership, and support. Not only are these women growing into aspiring productive citizens like Congresswoman Robin Kelly, our great treasurer, but these young women also champion programs that address maternal and infant outcomes for black women. Across 500 chapters in the U.S. and beyond, Sigma Gamma Rho's sisters uphold their motto, "Greater service, greater progress," and have done so for the last 100 years. And you think about the courage and tenacity it took to those seven black women. In 1922, at the height of Jim Crow in our country, at a majority-white university, to stand up and say, "We will link arms together, we will be united, we will support each other, and we will move..." We will support each other, and we will move forward." Ladies and gentlemen, that is incredible passion and history and underscores the importance of this sorority. To this day, Sigma Gamma Row is still the only one historically black sorority to be founded at a predominantly white institution. As city leaders who champion inclusivity and equity, I am proud to extend this resolution to Sigma Gamma Row, along with my best wishes for continued success. Many have said it, and I will repeat it. Our young people need to see you. They need to see the possibilities for their own lives. So as you stand up proudly in your respective communities, we thank you for everything that you're doing and your service, but thank you for your example and the role model that you set because our young people need to see your images, not the images of tragedy that are constantly portrayed in the media. And I hope that the cameras, as you record this, turn your cameras on these women. Show them in their true light because this is what black community looks like. And Commander Ward, I'm going to give you a couple of props too. Ladies and gentlemen, the West Side, led by Commander Ward of the 11th District, has never been safer in our city's history. We thank you for your service. I know you're out there on those streets every day, leading by example, and that is exactly what your sorority is all about. So thank you, one and all, for your service. And I know I speak on behalf of this council when I say that we are deeply, deeply appreciative of everything that you do. The Divine Nine stands for excellence in our communities. We need to make sure that we keep supporting you and uplifting the fine work that you do. As Alderwoman Coleman said, no matter what colors you dawn, the work must be done, and you are leading from the front and making our communities better and stronger, and we are grateful for every act of kindness that you do. Thank you, and God bless you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have one last resolution. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to suspend the rules for the immediate consideration of a congratulatory resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President, and my City Council colleagues today for letting me introduce this resolution, which celebrates the 23rd anniversary for Pastor Chris Harris. Pastor Chris Harris, he is not here today, but he is here with us in spirit. How about that? Okay. Pastor Chris Harris is my friend and a neighbor. He is the pastor of Bright Star Church and St. James Church and founder of the Bright Star Community Outreach. He's also the chairman of the Greater Bronzeville Community Action Council, an organization of residents, parents, and other stakeholders who focus on education and the outcomes and activities of all of our schools in the Bronzeville, Greater Bronzeville community. Born and raised in the CHA Dearborn Homes Development, Pastor Harris is a visionary who moves easily and genuinely through communities across the city of Chicago. I always tell him that he's a man who doesn't let grass grow under his feet. If he sees an injustice, he's going to address it. If he sees a need, he's going to fill that need. He likes to fill voids. And years ago, I traveled with him to Israel, where we visited Natale, a trauma and resiliency center in the heart of one of the Israeli cities, I want to say it's Tel Aviv. And he returned to his beloved Chicago to create the Turn Center, which provides trauma counseling for youth and adults who have experienced violence and trauma. And on Sunday, the 20th, we will all gather to celebrate his 23 years of pastoral and community service. And I just wanted to bring this resolution forward today, Madam President, to acknowledge this tremendous pastoral counselor and recognize his many contributions to the city of Chicago. I wanted to also acknowledge that Alderman Coleman, King, and Hairston have asked to be added to this resolution, and if there are any others, I see...
Alderwoman, Alderman Moore, Alderman Curtis, Kapelman, Knudsen, Harris, Scott, Burnett, Villegas, Telly Pharo, Haddon, Lee, Rabois, Cardona, and Wagisback.
And Marty.
And Martin.
Rodriguez.
And Rodriguez. And Nugent. And Maldonado.
We're going to put everybody on there. How about that? But thank you, Madam President, for this opportunity, and I appreciate your indulgence as a City Council. I know it's, we've been here two hours already, and you're like, "One more resolution, please." But now we'll get to the work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I move passage of these resolutions in omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
I now move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, is Communications. Madam Clerk.
Communications from your Honor, the Mayor, to the Honorable, the City Council, the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a TIF redevelopment agreement with Chicago Market, a community cooperative. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District to provide TIF funds in the development of Brighton Park Campus. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide TIF funds for improvements at Near South High School. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a TIF redevelopment agreement with 4300 Roosevelt LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner Transportation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of TIF funds to support the development of enabling infrastructure for the University of Illinois Discovery Partners Institute. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the Second Amendment of the Kinsey Industrial Conservation Area TIF redevelopment project area. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the Third Amendment to the Pulaski Corridor TIF redevelopment program and plan. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the adoption of Red Line Extension Redevelopment Plan and Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Chicago Board of Education, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the provision of fee waivers for the Chicago Board of Education. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of the Budget Director, I transmit with Fund 925. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the scope of services budget and execution of service provider agreements with regard to specified special service areas. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a Class 7B tax incentive status for a property located 3552 West Grand Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned properties. Your favorable consideration of these ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request of the Commissioner of Assets, Information, and Services, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a new lease agreement with Welbeck 4 Chicago 2701 LLC. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner and Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the expenditure of open space impact fees, funds for improvements of various city parks and play areas. Your favorable consideration of these ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, request of the Commissioner of Buildings, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the Municipal Code to make technical corrections and adjustments to Chicago construction codes. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the Chicago zoning ordinance to clean up text errors. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council that the following documents are filed in my office relating to the respective subjects as follows. Amended Red Line Extension Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan and Project, City Treasurer Annual Report on Chicago Community Catalyst Fund LLC 2020, and City Treasurer's Annual Report on Chicago Community Catalyst Fund LLC 2021. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on November 4, 2022, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on November 16, 2022 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the City Council, City of Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that all those matters were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on November 7, 2022, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on November 16, 2022 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the City Council, City of Chicago. I also inform the City Council that actions taken at the special meeting held on November 14, 2022, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on November 16, 2022 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the City Council, City of Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that the ordinance authorizing the issuance of various new bonds and amending various bond ordinances, which was passed by the City Council on November 2, 2022, which requested to be published in pamphlet form, was published in special pamphlet form on November 10, 2022. I City Clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Zoning reclassifications of particular areas to refer to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, claims against the City of Chicago to refer to the Committee on Finance, amendment of Title 17 Municipal Code by reclassifying the area shown on map number 14-H at 1924 West 59th Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the Mayor and other city officers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, committee reports, starting with the Finance Committee. Chairman Wagisback.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met on November 14, 2022, item one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute a discount transfer sale and new loan refinance regarding Churchview Supportive Living Facility LP and Greater Southwest Development Corporation utilizing multifamily housing revenue bonds to rehabilitate the facility at 2626 West 63rd Street in the 16th Ward. Unless there's someone wishing to speak, I move to concur with the committee's favorable recommendation by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk.
The voting is now open. Please refresh your device, hit submit. I will now call if anyone else is present to mark their votes. Alderman Moore, oh, he came in. Alderman Irvin, he's not on this chair. All right, the voting is now closed.
All right. The yeas are 44, the nays are zero. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wagisback, back to you.
Madam President, item number two is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with Senior Village Phase 1 LLC, SPM Properties and Development LLC, Trinity 95th, and Cottage Grove. regarding the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with Senior Village Phase 1 LLC, SPM Properties and Development LLC, Trinity 95th and Cottage Grove Plan Community Development Series LLC, utilizing tax increment financing and multifamily program funds for development of the Imani Senior Village Affordable Living Units at 9633 South Cottage Grove Avenue in the 8th Ward. And unless Chairman Harris wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item three is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to reallocate unused 2022 city bond volume cap to Chicago Housing Authority for rehabilitation of the Albany Gains Apartments at 3030 West 21st Place in the 24th Ward and 3700 West Congress Parkway in the 28th Ward. If there is no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute a loan restructuring agreement with Lenora Bedar Lot for rehabilitation of six units at 3023 West Jackson Boulevard and 311 South Whipple Street in the 28th Ward. Unless someone wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item five is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with Yellow Banana LLC and utilize tax increment financing assistance in the amount of $13,492,500 for acquisition, rehabilitation, and operation of full-service grocery stores at 107th South Halsted Street in the 34th Ward, 2858 East 83rd Street in the 7th Ward, 420 South Pulaski Road in the 28th Ward, 4439 West 63rd Street in the 13th Ward, 7240 South Stony Island Avenue in the 7th Ward, and 7908 South Halsted Street in the 17th Ward. And I'll hold for comment from.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I'm sure if Alderman Irving was here, he would say something. I just want to commend you and your staff on keeping your commitment on bringing back something to the site they closed down on Madison Street in the 27th, 28th Ward. Although it's not in my ward, it's Service Ward, and matter of fact, my wife goes, used to go there and shop. I think it's very commendable to make sure that in these food deserts where grocery stores have left, you have found a creative way of bringing grocery stores back. And also, not to exclude the fact that you did it with an African-American grocery store owner. I think that's commendable, I think that's impressive, I think that means a lot in these African-American communities that an African-American grocery store owner is bringing back grocery stores to areas where we lost grocery stores. So I just want to say thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Coleman.
Thank you. I think that is, it's commendable that those six stores will be reopened and the city were making that investment. But I want to make it very clear and on record, Madam President, that the Whole Foods at 63rd and Halsted, my community has spoken, and they are against a Save-A-Lot grocery store, as we have heard today, and there has not been much community or any participation or partnership. And I want to make sure that those hard-earned tax dollars are not going forth to a seventh store without any skin in the game coming into community. Okay? Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the things you came in and when you were running for offices to focus on investing in the South and West Side of Chicago, and that, tell everybody in both public and private, you have done, in my opinion, a stellar job on it. And I appreciate this, because when we deal with stores just up and leaving, everybody know it's a challenge to get these stores to, any store almost, to come back into our neighborhood. Although I agree with Alderman Coleman in the fact that, you know, we don't always have to just settle for anything. In this case, in 79th and Halsted, it was a Save-A-Lot there, and it was used by many people in the community, coming in cars and on buses. And so for these young men to come in and come in and make a difference from what they're seeing, what their communities looked like when they were growing up, to want to invest in their community, they've had conversations with myself, we've talked with people in the community, and they're looking for this to open back up. And what they've agreed to even do, as Alderman Irving assisted, I've assisted, and others, even rebranding from a name standpoint to fit that community, but yet bringing products there that the community and the customers that serve their store will buy. So I'm excited that we'll be, you know, hopefully in the spring or summer, cutting another ribbon along the 79th Street corridor in Auburn Gresham, so that we can continue to bring businesses there, as it's already doing with Invest Southwest, not only from the business that Invest Southwest, you know, launched, but also small businesses coming, because they see the activity that's going there, and that's what this was all about. So I definitely stand in support of this and look for definitely a favorable vote on this for all, from all of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Metz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too want to commend my colleagues and you, Mayor, for opening up these grocery stores. It's important to celebrate taking out old and putting something new in. I had a meeting with the Yellow Bananas, because we have a vacancy on Central and North Avenue, a Save-A-Lot store, where there is no food for the community there. But today, I want to celebrate my colleagues, and tomorrow, we're going to keep working to fill that vacancy over in 37 on North Avenue in Central. I think that, Mayor, you are doing something that is not being told enough. You are helping areas in this city that have not been invested in at all. I saw with my own eyes dollars being spent where we've been neglected for so long, and now we are being able to get projects in a community where peoples can feel proud of, to hope. I get, community folks tell me all the time, you're doing a wonderful job. But let me tell you, I can't do that wonderful job without everybody. I need the whole city. I need everybody to look at constituents in every neighborhood as if they are somebody and want to help them. So let me say thank you, and congratulations to my colleagues for being able to bring a grocery store into their neighborhood. And if we're not in it now, just keep on fighting. I tell you, them baby steps going to get you somewhere if you don't give up. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Metz. Any others? If I may, Chairman Wegas back, let me just briefly address this issue. The problem of food deserts in our city is real and profound, and unfortunately has existed for far too long. We have to take advantage of every opportunity that we can to right that historic wrong. It's not always going to be perfect, it's not always going to be easy. But I can assure you, and I want to specifically speak to the woman who gave the impassioned statement earlier, who's still here, about a Save-A-Lot coming to the corner of 63rd and Halsted. I will tell you, we have tried mightily. From the moment that we found out that Whole Foods was pulling out, and I will say, Whole Foods has not been a good partner, period. They have not been collaborative, they have not been transparent, and that's an issue for another day, but believe me, that is something that we're not going to let go unnoticed and be silent about. We have tried all of the indigenous grocery stores. You know who they are. Jewel, Pete's, Dominic's, Mariano's, and others. We still have to break through, frankly, the mindset of people that feel like they can't and don't want to go south of Roosevelt Road or west of Ashland. We've got to keep fighting that fight, and I'm determined to do that with your help, with your collaboration, and make sure that that happens. This is an opportunity. We've spent a lot of diligence with these young men, young to me, thirty-something-year-olds who have a unique concept that we've told them, we will absolutely hold them accountable to make sure that they deliver, we will hold them accountable to making sure that they collaborate with the local aldermen, that they do more community engagement, and that they have to understand it's a different sort of engagement that must happen in these neighborhoods where, that have been disinvested in for far too long, and frankly, where there's not a lot of trust in government, there's not a lot of trust in our ability to actually say and do what we claim we're going to do. So more work to be done, but I do believe that this is in the best interest, not only of the neighborhoods that are going to benefit, but the best interest of our city. Chairman Wegas back, back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. So I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number six is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with the Institute of Cultural Affairs, utilizing tax increment financing assistance in the amount of $2 million for the rehabilitation of a facility at 4750 North Sheridan Road in the 46th Ward. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number seven is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute a reciprocal grant agreement between the Illinois Manufacturing Excellence Center and the City of Chicago Department of Planning and Development to integrate services for implementation of manufacturing competitiveness initiatives. If there is no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
Madam President, I was out of the room when the first item on the Finance Committee was voted on, and I'd like, if there's no objection, to be included in the first item as affirmative vote.
So reflected. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. I too wish to be recorded as I on the first vote of the Finance Committee in the, also the unsuccessful motion for reconsideration.
So reflected.
And also, quickly, I apologize at a step out of the chamber about the Yellow Banana. I was actually doing an interview with WBEZ about that, and I want to thank you all, your commitment to the South and West Sides on eliminating these food deserts in our community. So again, let's roll our sleeves up and continue to do the work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, Madam President, I move passage, renew my motion to move passage of the, by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number eight is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Board of Education for tax increment financing assistance in the amount of $740,000 to renovate and construct new aquaponics classrooms at Carl Schur's High School, 3601 North Milwaukee Avenue in the 45th Ward. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number nine is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for tax increment financing assistance in the amount of $5 million to replace the plumbing system at Marie Skolodowska Curie Metropolitan High School at 4959 South Archer Avenue in the 14th Ward. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number 10 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to execute Amendment Number Three to the 79th Street Corridor Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project and Plan. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item 11 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to execute Amendment Number Three to the Holman Arlington Tax Increment Refinancing Redevelopment Project and Plan. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 12 is the report of cases in which judgments or settlements were entered into for the month of October 22nd, October 2022, which will be placed on file with the clerk. Items 13 and 14 consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and denial of payment of various small claims against the city. If there is no objection, I ask these items be placed in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 15 consists of three orders authorizing corporation counsel to enter into and execute three settlements. Item 15A is in the case of Dahlia Rivera versus City of Chicago and Carl Ortiz, number 19L 2076 in the Circuit Court of Cook County, in the amount of $385,000. The item received favorable approval by the committee, and unless someone wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 15B is in the case of Larry Curtis versus City of Chicago and Joseph Scattoni, number 21 CB 03121 in the Northern District of Illinois, in the amount of $457,500. This item received favorable approval by the committee. Unless someone wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 15C is in the case of the estate of Michael Elam Jr., deceased by Alice Martin, the mother and independent administrator, versus Chicago Police Officers Adolfo Bolaños and Guillermo Gama and the City of Chicago, number 19 CB 04130 in the Northern District of Illinois, in the amount of $5 million. The item received favorable approval by the committee. However, with the exception of Alderman Spazado, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And all those objections noted.
Thank you. And Madam President, this concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Chairman Wegas. Back next up, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Chairman Viegas.
Madam President, members of the City Council reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Thursday, November 10, 2022, the committee held an in-person meeting and recommends passage of the following items. First six items are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas collectively voted on by the committee members introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during the October 26, 2022 City Council meeting. Reappointments of Wallace Anderson, Alessa Duncan, and Alan Goldberg to SSA number 24, Clark Street Commission located in the 49th Ward. Appointment of Sadaya Johnson to SSA number 52-2021, 51st Street located in the 3rd Ward. Appointment of Dominique Gamble to 95th and Ashland, SSA number 69, Commission located in the 19th and 21st Wards. Appointment of Pam Farley to SSA number 75, Oak Street Commission located in the 42nd Ward. I move for passage of these appointments and reappointments by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Missed item number four.
Say that one more time, Madam Chair.
I believe that you missed item number four.
Is that the appointment of Julian Kidd?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my next item.
Okay.
The next item is the appointment of Julian Kidd to SSA number 45, 103rd Hall Street Commission located in the 34th Ward. Due to an error in description within the original letter, a substitute appointment letter was received and circulated at the committee meeting, which was followed by acceptance and passage. I move for passage of this appointment by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Following 26 items are a series of ordinances on tax levy, scope of services, budget, and management agreements to various special service areas which were collectively voted on by the committee members introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during the October 26, 2022 City Council meeting.
City Council Meeting. SSA Number Four, 95th Street located in 19th Ward. SSA Number Five, Commercial Avenue located in the 7th and 10th Wards. SSA 16, Greettown Hosted located in the 25th, 27th, and 42nd Wards. SSA 18, North Hosted located in the 44th and 46th Wards. SSA 19, Howard Street located in the 49th Ward. SSA 79, Lawrence Pulaski Elston located in the 39th Ward. SSA 21-2016, Lincoln Square located in the 40th and 47th Wards. SSA Number 25, Little Village located in the 12th, 22nd, and 24th Wards. SSA Number 26, Broadway located in the 48th and 49th Wards. SSA 31, Greeter Ravenswood located in the 40th, 46th, and 47th Wards. SSA 34, Uptown located in the 46th, 47th, and 48th Wards. SSA Number 38, North Center located in the 47th Ward. SSA Number 44, 103rd Street Beverly located in the 19th Ward. SSA 45, 103rd Hosted located in the 34th Ward. SSA 54, Sheridan Road located in the 49th Ward. SSA 55, 111th Kedzie located in 19th Ward. SSA Number 60, Albany Park located in the 33rd and 35th Wards. SSA 61, Hyde Park located in the 4th and 5th Wards. SSA 64, Walden Parkway located in 19th Ward. SSA 69, 95th Street Ashland located in 19th and 21st Wards. SSA 71, Roseland located in the 9th and 34th Wards. SSA 75, Oak Street located in the 42nd Ward. SSA Number Seven, Kedzie Industrial Track located in the 14th Ward. SSA 32, Auburn Gresham, 79th Street located in the 17th and 21st Wards. SSA Number 43, Devon Avenue located in the 50th Ward. SSA 51, Chatham Cottage Grove located in the 6th and 8th Wards. I move for passage of these ordinances by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Next item is an ordinance in support of a Class 6B tax incentive for property at 4300 South Hosted, 4500 South Hosted, and 850 West 45th Street expansion in the 11th Ward introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during the September 21, 2022 City Council Meeting. I move for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next item is an ordinance in support of a Class 6B tax incentive for property at 4743 South Talman Avenue in the 15th Ward introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during the September 21, 2022 City Council Meeting. I move for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Final item is an ordinance in support of a Class 6B tax incentive renewal for industrial facility property at 340 North Sacramento Boulevard in the 27th Ward introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during the October 26, 2022 City Council Meeting. I move for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Education, Childhood Development. Vice Chair King.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of City Council, reporting for your Committee on Education, which held a virtual, thank you, which held a virtual hearing on November 9th, 2022. The committee has one report, one item to report, item 02022-3601, Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 28090, regarding quarterly hearings on operations and performance of Chicago public schools. The vote in committee was tied 7 to 7, and therefore, the committee submits a do not pass recommendation. Additionally, the committee was scheduled to hold a subject matter hearing on Chicago public schools with the CEO of Chicago Public Schools, but ultimately, the subject matter hearing did not take place. So hopefully, it will in the future. Thank you, Madam President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. Next up, the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. I'm sorry. The Chair recognizes.
Copies of the report. We were wondering if we could get a copy of the report, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, you're talking about the Committee on Education? Okay. If we can just, Vice Chair King, if we can get copies and we can distribute it to the members?
Yeah, I will, I can get that to everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next up, the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Chairman Ostrom.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which met in person yesterday, November 15, 2022. Committee has a series of reports recommending the passage of the following. Item number one is an intergovernmental permit agreement between the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago, Chicago Department of Public Health, Discover Partners Institute at the University of Illinois, to sample wastewater at the district's north side, southwest side, and Calumet sites to monitor transmissions of COVID-19 virus and other pathogens. I move passage to this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item two is an authorization of parcel ownership transfer of Chicago Riverwalk concessionaire Island Hut, Party Hut LLC, and Island Party Hut, and Island Party Boat licensee to the remaining owners. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three is a negotiated sale of city-owned vacant property at 4810-4834 South Cottage Grove to the Chicago, I'm sorry, Northwestern Memorial Healthcare with sale of one vacant lot, the developer's lot at 4833 South Evans Avenue, to the city towards credit to the closing in the 4th Ward. Make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four was held in committee. Item number five is the sale of city-owned property at 1736 South North Ridgeway Avenue to Anna DeValle and Disfredo DeValle. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Objection, so ordered.
Item number six is the sale of city-owned property at 6108 South Wood to Luis Miguel Rios Cruz and Lydia Aletia Morendo Gonzalez. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number seven is the sale of city-owned property at 5426 West Matomic Avenue to Patricia Dodd, Melvin Dodd, and Basira Dodd. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item eight is the sale of city-owned property at 5952 South Loomis Boulevard to Emma Hudson. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item nine is the sale of city-owned property at 103 West 110th Place to Elvis Aveas Garcia Palma. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 10 is the sale of vacant city-owned property at 2747 West Jackson Boulevard to Martin Nunez. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 11 is the sale of vacant city-owned property at 2445 East 74th Street to Michael Dennis Lofton II. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 12 is the amendment to the ordinance which has sold various lots under the agreement with Jode Investment LLC and MKB Business Strategies LLC, now relinquishing 2339 West Monroe, substituting by negotiations of publication 2433 West Congress Parkway for this development in the 28th Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 13 is an amendment to the site preparation redevelopment agreement with Chicago Neighborhood Initiatives, Inc., revising start dates, deadlines, and required number of lots in the Lawndale Community in the 24th Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 14 is a designation of 1321 South Wood Street as a low affordability area in the 28th Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 15 was the Department of Housing Quarterly Report from Quarter Two Housing Report. And I also wanted to let the members know that the Housing and Real Estate Committee has invited CHA CEO Tracy Scott to come before the Housing and Real Estate Committee in January. I will make sure that the members of the council are aware of the date and the time, and we are working with CHA on that. But otherwise, Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Ostrom. Next up, the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a committee, a meeting was held on Thursday, November 10th, 2022. Before the committee, there were 424 items. There were 421 routine items that passed and three routine traffic items that did not pass. If there is no objection, I move for the passage of these ordinances in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, the Committee on Public Safety. Chairman Talia Farrow.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of City Council, reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, for which a meeting was held on November 10th, 2022. Madam President, I'd like to thank my Vice Chair, Harry Osterman, for conducting the meeting. There were two items before the committee for which the committee recommended a passage of substitutes ordinance 2021-3215, the Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapters 8-4 and 8-20, by modifying various sections and adding new sections regarding looting, mob action, vandalism, and unlawful possession of firearms or firearm ammunition. If there are no objections, Madam President, I recommend the passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, alongside Alderman Byrd, Sico Lopez, I move to defer and publish this item.
The item will be deferred and published.
The committee recommend a do not passage of substitutes ordinance 2022-1226, the Establishment of Residential Warrants Rules and Regulations for the Chicago Police Department members, also known as the Angelina Young Ordinance. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Chairman Spazado.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, also known as the Happy Committee. Held a meeting on November 14th. Before I report out, Madam President, I would like to say something, and I appreciate if you'd recognize Alderwoman Dow, I'd like to say something. So, so I just would like to say something beyond the normal that, you know, I know a lot of you laugh at me when I say I call this the Happy Committee, and I truly feel it is a happy committee because good and happy things happen in this committee. And the last meeting, I had the honor and the privilege of passing something for a friend of mine, Pastor Ford, who, I'm not sure if it was your father or your great-grandfather, Pastor, but, you know, Pastor Ford and me became friends about, you know, 10, 11 years ago through something that happened in City Council. And sure enough, he comes before me, we're recognizing the renaming of the Clark Ford House in honor of his, I'm not sure if it was his grandfather or great-grandfather, but, grandfather, okay, right, his grandfather. So I just wanted, I just wanted to note that, and then that is in the, in the 3rd Ward, and Alderwoman Dow would like to say something before we report out.
The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The renaming of the Clark House Museum to the Clark Ford House corrects the historical record of Chicago's oldest home, which was built in 1836, and it recognizes the contribution of Bishop Henry Louis Ford. In a country where African-American history is regularly overlooked or minimized, Chicago is doing the righteous thing today by correcting the record. The ordinance acknowledges Bishop Louis Henry Ford's contributions to saving the home, renovating the home, and creating economic opportunities for African-American tradesmen who worked on that home. I want to thank Pastor Kevin Ford. Would you stand, Pastor Ford? Thank Pastor Kevin Ford. And Pastor Kevin Ford is the grandson of Bishop Henry Louis Ford. And Pastor Ford, I want to say, you know what the young people say? You had the receipts? You had the receipts. And I want to thank you for bringing forward the history of what occurred at that home. And thank you for bringing this forward and letting the world know and Chicago know that the record needed to be corrected. I also want to thank Erin Harkey, our Commissioner of D.C.A.S., and her staff for their quick action on this ordinance. This did not languish. It was moved forward. We had a community meeting. We met with the Colonial Dames, and things just went smoothly. And so I want to thank her and her, for her efforts. And Mayor Lightfoot, I want to thank you for your support on this ordinance as well. Now we have more work to do because, just because we have a museum and a house, we have to think about the programming, the message that it sends to the people in the city of Chicago, what children see when they walk into that space. And so I look forward to working with you, Pastor Ford, to make that happen. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I was trying to get my hand up before Alderman Dow because I want her to close. But first of all, I honor, you know, Pastor Ford here, but also his grandfather, who was great friends with Reverend Clay Evans. But I stand up to say, in terms of this, I had no idea this was once Bishop Ford's home. And it bothers me because when I was getting my master's at Loyola and one of my historical architectural classes, we took a tour of the Clark House, and it was so beautiful, and everything was mentioned, but that was not mentioned. Let me tell you, it matters. It matters. It matters. It matters. So I thank you, Alderman Pet Dow, for bringing this forward, and I definitely stand in resolution, I mean, in support of this ordinance and hope that it passes this, with the support of this entire body. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. Chairman Spazado, back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Re-presuming, thank you, Alderwoman Dow, also, for your kind words and our little bit of education on what was going on over there. Appreciate it. So with that, the committee recommends the passage of the item 2022-2994, renaming of Clark House Museum to Clark Ford House. I move, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Next up, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Chairman Brookins.
Good morning, Madam President. Reporting on your Committee for Transportation in Public Way, a meeting which was held on November 10th, 2022, the following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. Item number one, that's a mayoral, that item is going to be held into committee. Item number two is page three through seven include 39 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local aldermen from Wards 1, 3, 4, 11, 14, 16, 18, 19, 22, 23, 25, 27, 29, 30, 32, 36, 40, 42 through 44, 47, 49, and 50. Page eight includes one transportation ordinance in the 2nd Ward. Page nine includes three subdivision ordinances located in the 2nd, 43rd, and 44th Ward. And on page 10 includes five vacation ordinance and one covenant release ordinance located in Wards 2, 11, 27, 35, 37, and 44. Madam President, if there are no objections, I move passage of those items, except for the item that is being held by the most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. That concludes our committee reports. Next up, the Agreed Calendar. Chairman Harris.
Thank you. I've received from the Clerk Andrea M. Valencia a total of 34 items proposed for the Agreed Calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tributary resolutions for the following alderman. Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Mits, and Alderman Ostrom. And I move approve passage of the Agreed Calendar in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, new business. The clerk will call the wards, beginning with the first.
Claims, free permits, license, the exemptions which are referred to the Committee on Finance, zoning amendments which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, grants and privilege on and over the public way which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way; an exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way; Almond Laspada has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Aldolfo Shabadoo Quinones Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way; Almond Laspada also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Gaspar Gomez Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way; Almond Laspada and others have proposed resolution to call for Chicago Public Schools to establish a plan to address mental health needs of students exacerbated by COVID-19 pandemic and commitment to hire more social workers, which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the members of the Committee on Health and Human Relations and the members of the Committee on Education and Child Development. Almond Dowell has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the City Council Committee on the Budget and Government Operations for the year 2022, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Almond Harrison has proposed ordinance for vacation of public ways in the area bounded by East 56th Street, South Drexel Avenue, East 57th Street, and South Cottage Grove Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Harris has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the City Council Committee on Committees and Rules for the year 2022, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Almond Lee has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 3700 South Morgan, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Coleman and Almond Taylor have proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Donald L. Seals Senior Drive, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Moore has proposed ordinance to close the traffic portion of South Low Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Scott has proposed ordinance for vacation of public ways in the area bounded by West Polk Street, the Belt Railroad right-of-way, West Fifth Avenue, and South Kilpatrick Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Burnett has proposed ordinance for vacation of public alleys in the area bounded by West Division Street, North Cherry Avenue, and North Branch Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Irvin has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 513 South Damon Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Vasquez has proposed ordinance for opening of the public alleys in the area bounded by West Edgewater Avenue, North Ashland Avenue, West Hollywood Avenue, and North Hermitage Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Tony has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 2900 North Lake Shore Drive and 331 West Surf Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Martin has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 3501 Northwestern Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. And Alderman Osterman has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 6041 North Clark Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards.
Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of aldermatic introductions.
Thank you, sir. Next up, approval of the Journals. Alderman Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam President. I am not aware of any corrections to the Journals from the November 4th, 2022 regular meeting, the November 7th, 2022 regular meeting, or the November 14th, 2022 special meeting, and move that they be approved.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, there was one item of unfinished business, but it was withdrawn, so there is no remaining unfinished business.
Next up, miscellaneous business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, there was one item of miscellaneous business, but it was withdrawn, so there is no remaining miscellaneous business.
The date and time of the next meeting?
I've handed up an ordinance to the Clerk, setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Madam Clerk.
Being ordained by the City Council of City Chicago, Section 1, the next regular meeting of the City Council of City Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, December 14th, 2022, beginning at 10:00 a.m. in the Council Chamber on the second floor in City Hall, 121 North LaSalle, Chicago, Illinois. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced after its passage.
Madam President, I move passage in the Omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, the Omnibus. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters in the Omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Ladies and gentlemen, before we get to our last item of business, which is adjournment, today marks a historic day in the history of our city. One of our colleagues, who served the city well for 20 years, this is his last City Council Day. And I want to thank Alderman George Cardenas for your service, for your humor, your wit, your counsel. You're going on to serve a better cause, and we salute you for what you've done for the residents of your ward. I know that you've left the ward better than you found it. I know that you'll continue to be in service in calling me up in my ear and probably your other colleagues. But we congratulate you and wish you the best in your next office. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations, George. Now, we can get out on time for lunch and still take care of the people's business. But for real, I've known you over the past 20 years. I worked with your brother when we were at Arthur Anderson. You've been always a good ear, a good person to talk to and sound things off of. Appreciate your friendship and the time you've been here with us. And like I said, I knew you before I became alderman, and just wanted to thank you for all that you've done to help all of us as a council. The work that you're going to, though, I just got my tax bill in the mail, so I will be seeing you in a relatively short period of time. But again, keep up the work that you're doing, and we appreciate all that you've done here in the City Council, and God bless you in the greatest in your next endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much. I also like to stand in support of this resolution, George. It's been an honor serving with you for so many years. You always have been a stand-up guy, a team player. You know, of course, I'm like everyone else, would wish that you would hurry up and finish with your speeches sometimes, but other than that, but you always, being a technical guy and being a former accountant, you're very technical, so you want to make sure you say everything you wanted to say. You've done well in the 12th Ward. You service those people very well. You've done some great things in the City Council. I wish you well in your next endeavor, and I'll be over there to see you, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The Chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Madam President. I also stand to be associated with this resolution. George was the Latino Caucus Chairman when I first got in and actually helped create the foundation, which is a not-for-profit arm, where we've had developed scholarships, where we've given over $800,000 in scholarships, and have also provided training for 100 professionals in our fifth cohort. And we want to thank George for putting that vision forward and creating a foundation not-for-profit, so that way we can help those young men and women that were looking to further their education, however, had some financial challenges. And so, we wish you well, George, in the other side of the building, I think. But we wish you well as you continue to serve the people of Cook County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Viegas. The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Farrow.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I didn't hear a resolution, Madam President, so Ariel asked me, was this, are we rising in support of George leaving? So, I do rise in support of that as well. But, Madam President, with all seriousness...
Apparently, there were silly pills passed out today.
George, I sincerely, from the bottom of my heart, want to thank you for your service to the city. You've done this for quite a while. And one thing I could say that, in the seven and a half years that I've served with you, you've spoken with passion. Almost every time, you've spoken with passion. And that just shows me how committed and concerned you are about the community that you serve and the city. So, I want to say congratulations on your election. Congratulations on your continued service, and it has been an honor to serve with you. Thank you so much, George.
Thank you, Alderman Talia Farrow. The Chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam President. George, I think, maybe I'm wrong, but I think that most of the accolades you are receiving here this afternoon is because everybody here is super, super happy that you are leaving. Bottom line. Only, maybe because we no longer going to have those very long speeches on every issue. And even though, yes, that is, I'm just kidding. I mean, I really going to miss you. You've been a very effective alderman representing the constituents of your ward, the 12th Ward. And after so many years, most people do need a change, and I think that you saw that moment that you needed a change. And I know that you're going to serve the people of the city of Chicago very well and some of the suburbs as a member of the Board of Review. Congratulations on your new endeavors and your new role as Commissioner, and I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. George, I just want to say thank you for all the years of your service and more to come. I appreciate all of the advice that you gave me over the years, whether I took it or not. But I think it was all with good intention. You're always kind and generous with your time as well, and I appreciate that. And I hope that your new colleagues on the Board of Review see that same mannerisms and ability to work with people that you have, as you did here. I think that moniker of being long-winded was well-deserved. On this side of things, we just couldn't figure out which congressional race you were in. But we always appreciate your input on a lot of these issues. No matter how long you talked and what you talked about, I think everybody understood that you were speaking from the heart, and that's the most important thing here. And I hope that you continue to do that at the Board of Review. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Wegasback. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Happy to join the roast here. George Cardenas, just kidding. Listen, we don't always agree, George. I think a lot of people know that. But you were always willing to pick up that phone, listen, hear me out, and potentially work things out where we could. And to that, I certainly appreciate. You will be going on, and your next task is going to be a very important one. We're going to be looking to you for leadership in the next task, as much as, you know, here. The weight is heavy on that side of the building as well, and there's some great things that have been happening over there. I think working-class people are doing better in this city because of the work that's been happening on that end of the building, and we look to you to help in that direction. And we want to make sure that you are doing that good work. But keep up that spirit of listening to colleagues and potentially figuring out how to work together. I do appreciate that. And lastly, as the current Chair of the Latino Caucus Foundation, I just thank you for getting it started and helping to envision what is now an amazing institution doing some great work. That couldn't have been possible without the folks who started, including yourself. So, thank you, and good luck on your next step.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. George, it's been a pleasure serving with you, and I really do wish you the best in your next endeavor. And that said, Madam President, I'd like to cede my remaining 15 minutes to George Cardenas, because no one is better at talking about George than George. George, thank you for your service, and your speeches were long, but you had a lot of important things to say. We'll miss working with you. Take care.
Thank you, Alderman Riley. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. George, I too want to say I didn't always agree with you, but I always felt there was respect between us for 11 and a half years together, so I appreciate you and everything you did. Once again, the same old story. You were somewhat entertaining to me, so I would always put the timer on you, figure out myself, is George going to be talking for 10 minutes, 8 minutes, 12 minutes? But I appreciate all you did for this city. Best wishes in your new job. God bless you and your family. Thank you for everything, George. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins.
I won't bring that up. Thank you, Madam President. All the lighthearted teasing about his long-windedness. If you happened to catch Chicago Tonight last night, even Paris Schutz couldn't interrupt him once he was on a roll, so it's all true. But, George, thank you for being my colleague, serving with me all these years. It doesn't seem like it's been 20 years ago since we first met in a parking lot in Home Depot on Western Avenue. My old neighborhood of McKinley Park, at the time, you organized the annual bike ride, which became a neighborhood tradition, and people really look forward to that every year. So, it's been a pleasure being your colleague. Good luck on the other side of the building. I know this is not farewell. We'll still be seeing you around, and we'll work together on all matters of things of concern to our city and our county of Cook. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Hopkins. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
All right, we'll wait for Levator. First of all, definitely stand in recognizing the work of this alderman. I tell people that before we get into all the jokes and stuff, that one thing I believe, you represent the people that elect you first and foremost. And in first, and representing, and while elected and representing those, you don't always have to hurt other people. You've put your constituents first, George Cardenas, and you've put your people first. But you've done it, at least in working with me and I've seen, without putting other people down. And even in some cases, helping and finding the ways to work together. That is not always done. You hear people sometimes talk about the black and brown divide. I tell people, that's not in the neighborhood level. It's a lot at the leadership level. And it's the people that's in leadership that's going to have to bring that in. And you're one of those leaders that people can go talk to and you can work with to say, hey, how can we work together? And so, regardless of the politics, where you fully agree on the politics stuff or not, that's one thing. But when you're dealing with people, I can say for certainly, George, you've been a person I can work with and talk with that can move both communities forward, and I thank you for that. Now, as I told you out there, we got this tax bill, and you're not even gone fully yet, and Chris Kegy said, "It's your fault that my tax bills are high." And so, as a former person at the Board of Review, I'm coming to see you, man. But I don't think it's your fault. And I think you're going to bring, working with Commissioner Larry Rogers Jr., who's a great person over there, I think you guys working together are going to bring even more light to what's happening here, educate and inform even more, and work together so that the taxpayers ultimately will be the beneficiaries from you being there at the Board of Review. So, I wish you so much success in your new endeavor, and I look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, George, I'm going to miss our calls and our late-night conversations on the phone, but it's been a thrill and a pleasure to work with you. You really made these last four years quite interesting for me. So, I want to say thank you. But I wish you well, George, on your next endeavor in life. You will be missed, and you on to your next adventure. And so, God bless you, and look forward for me to come over there and harass you a little bit.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Mits.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too want to stand, George, and commend you on your new position for the 20 years that you've served here in the City Council. I can truly say I remember your first day being sworn in as the Alderman of the 12th Ward. I want to encourage you to continue to work for all peoples. I know you was even in my area. So, where there is black and brown that you call a collision, then let's work to help everyone. If we keep an open mind about helping in your new position, you will do just fine. So, we're here to support you, and if you need help with anything, reach out to us. And yes, we will be calling you, because I'm getting the calls already regarding those tax bills. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderwoman Mits. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Nugent.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to wish George best in his new endeavors. It's been a real pleasure to work with you on the Environment Committee over this past four years, and I want to compliment you on your advocacy for your community and your work. So, best of luck, my friend. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Nugent. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dowell.
Thank you, Madam President. George, you know, I sit right here, and I have a straight shot looking at you. And I have to admit, sometimes when you speak, I have to say to have to admit, sometimes when you speak, I have to say to myself, hmm, I don't really understand what he's saying. And then I have to listen, and it really makes sense. And so I want to just say it's been a pleasure serving with you. I wish you the best as you move forward with your new endeavor. And make it plain. Make it plain. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the city council, too, I too rise in support of you leaving. And, well, that's what they're doing. But honestly, George, we have shared 20 decades of...
Twenty decades.
I mean, 20 decades, George. 22 decades. Right? Right? Okay, we're all goofy today. But I want to say that it has always been an adventure with you, and we've had two such adventures in the remap, and neither one of us will be doing the next one, and I'm glad. You have been a good colleague most of the time. I too sit within a straight shot, and often that's the time when I run out of water and I have to go get water, more water, is during your speech. However, I think we will miss them. We will miss them, because when you do speak, you are passionate, and we know that you are representing the people that put you here and that you are actually sharing your experiences because that is what you were here to do. So I respect that. I wish you well in the future, and congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Hairston. The chair recognizes Alderman Rebios.
George, where do I start? First of all, I want to thank you for sharing your thoughts with us, but I like the work that you did with the Latino Caucus. I appreciate the work you did. You stand for it, and you cared about it. I also think that you're one of the first of the, what is it, '03 classmates that's leaving, as I look at Brookins, so congratulations. But promise me one thing, can you stand up and speak for a short time today? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you. George, in all seriousness, I just wish you all the best in your new endeavor, and all of us who serve with you will remember your speeches, but the reality, the work that is important is not the speeches here, it's the work in your community. And I think you leave with a great amount of pride in moving your neighborhood forward in a positive way, things that your constituents, your family, your friends will remember. So wish you all the best in your new endeavor, and congratulations on a good career here. Thank you.
Last words from me, and then I would ask that your colleague be given the privilege to speak to this body one last time. I'm going to pretend I didn't hear that one. The one thing I also wanted to say about Alderman Cardenas, we actually met in 2005 when I worked in the procurement department. We've bumped up against each other a couple times over the years, but have really gotten to know each other quite well over these last three and a half years. And so I've spent a lot of time with you, spent a lot of time in your community, listened and hopefully followed most of your advice on a range of different issues. But the thing I have, that is my probably enduring memory of you, is that you're a great dad, that you care deeply about your children. I've seen how you interact with your youngest, and it's very, very endearing. And that tells me a lot about who you are and how she responds to you, the great love that you have between each other. That says a lot about who you are as a human being. I echo all the words that have been said about your service of this body, but importantly, your service as a husband, a father, that's what's most important in life, and we congratulate you and send you off to the other side of the building, where it looks like there's going to be a conga line of your colleagues complaining about their tax bills. Ladies and gentlemen, Alderman George Cardenas.
I'll be short. Just want to say thank you for allowing me to share 20 years in this body with your eyes. Thank you.
Now, we better turn quickly because he'll change his mind. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.